And then there's always misunderstanding. It's never, wow.
It's very American.
That's crap.
I, I think it. Because it ruined our perfectly good product doing that.
They have, because I love PM where I haven't had any issues with. Even when the county was jumping over to Cisco, you know, I had no issues with it. We're already there. We, we've had the team.
All right, everybody else here, right?
Yes.
We want to call this, uh, city council meeting to order today is Monday, November the 24th, 2025. We'll begin with the implications.
I'll let you do it.
Okay, I'll do it. Okay. And then we'll follow the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We love you, Lord. We're so grateful for your love toward us. We ask God for your grace and, uh, Lord, direction to be on this meeting tonight. And Father, we just ask that all things be done according to your will. And we thank you for your blessings on this city. Help us, Lord, to continue to be good stewards. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to quickly read the State of the Union, or State of the City. And then we'll have our visitors come in for a picture with the council. Uh, let me go ahead and. Oops, that is not it. All right. All right, let me begin by saying first and foremost that I believe the state of the city is strong. The Phoenix Springs is in great shape and improvements are being made regularly by our city manager, our city council, our staff, and the many, many wonderful volunteers who support our community. I want to take a moment to acknowledge our volunteers. We could not accomplish what we do without your dedication. We're deeply grateful for everyone who serves on our planning board, our cemetery board, our CRA board, even our county EDA board, our tree beautification board, our code review board. Our city has been truly blessed with volunteers who work both with the city and alongside of the city. Many of our events are supported by volunteers, including Christmas reflections in December, Lake Fest in May, ongoing Main Street activities, Veterans Day on November the 11th, parades, and much, much more. Our city manager has made several management changes to better serve our community. He has consolidated our water, gas, sewer departments along with utility building into a single department with its own director. He's also reinstated the public works director to oversee streets, facilities, parks, recreation, cemetery, maintenance, facilities, rentals, and more. Several projects are, uh, either in progress or have been, uh, recently completed. Uh, the final plans for harbors at Emerald Springs on North 20th Street have been approved. The tractor supply that has been constructed on a new facility on 331 South, which is now fully operational. A ribbon, ribbon cutting was held for the Wendy's on South 331, which is now open. Lakeside Town Homes on Circle Drive and Historic Phoenix Springs have received final plan approval. Aspen Dental has completed their offices along with the new Verizon store, now fully functional on South 331. Bay Springs with three single family phases and one town, townhouse phase south of I-10 and west of 331 is under construction. Uh, Michael McCormick, uh, who began all this, also has a project under construction where Walton Road intersects with, uh, Highway 83. There they'll have 65 homes, most likely a big circle K on the corner, and two commercial businesses that will probably be fast foods. Walton School District is building a new district complex on East Walton Road. Village Springs, thank God, has revived their housing project on Orange Street, on Orange Avenue and 17th Street. Uh, they had to reduce that and they tore down some of the units to make it pliable, which is, was 50. Now there will be 39 units there in that, uh, um, neighborhood. Uh, Habitat for Humanity on Van and Third Street, they're now building nine homes out there, which are very, very much needed. A number of other housing projects are being considered for approval coming soon. In partnership with Tri-County Community Council and the Walton County Board of County Commissioners, the city brought the Life Enrichment Center, Senior Center, under city management. The city has received a grant from Northwest Florida Water Management District for the affluent line replacement covering design and engineering. Uh, the HCA, Free Standing Emergency Room, received final approval and it's now under construction. Expected to open by February 2026. That's at 331 South and Interstate 10. The city took ownership of an old rundown trailer park on West 90, cleaned it up, and it has been purchased by a developer for future development. That was out at 21st, 22nd Street. Along Highway 28B, uh, out on Eagles Crossing and US 331 South, significant water and sewer infrastructure has been constructed. The city is nearing completion on repairs of the historic library, including a new roof to which the library is the oldest operating library in the state of Florida. Numerous improvements have also been made to our parks, including Chipley Park and the Lakeyard, Florence Park on South 11th Street. I'm pleased to report that our 2023-24 financial audit was submitted on time. The auditors found evidence provided both sufficient and appropriate and marked, and a very marked improvement over the past audits. We're very proud of our finance department with a special mention to Danielle McDaniel and our accounting firm. One of our premier projects is the Phoenix Springs Airport. We have completed the new terminal, which is a beautiful facility now being occupied. Our engineers are actively working on the runway extension to road access, commercial hangar construction. The city also purchased five acres off Huckabond Road to access the southern portion of the airport, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in future road construction. This past year, the Phoenix Springs was in receipt of a $3.1 million grant that goes toward our new commercial hangars that we will build. In closing, let me say that the state of the city is strong because of the united, unified efforts of our employees, elected officials, contractors, engineers, consultants, attorneys, legislators, and most importantly, the citizens of this great city. Together we'll make the Phoenix a city we'll all love and all be proud to call it home. Thank you, Mayor Bob Campbell. All right, this time we have a, uh, special team that we're going to bring in. Let me first tell you that, uh, this is the Walton Braves Junior League. They're, uh, nine and 10 years old. And, uh, they have gone all season. They had their regular season where it was, uh, eight games and they won every one of them, usually by at least a 20-point spread. And then they won both of their championship games following that, and then they went to what they call their Super Bowl. And they went into overtime on that one and they won it. Uh, so let's give them a big welcome. You tell them to come on in. We're going to line them up back here. We'll move these chairs and let the council pick with them and there's a lot of them, so we'll squeeze them in here. Bring them in right here. Yeah. There you go. Come on.
Come on, everybody.
All the way over to the side. Okay. Yeah, y'all keep coming over. She's going, she's got a brandy that'll fit this whole pump with diet. All right, these are, all right, let's put somebody, you guys come on down front here. Come on, talk to us, Coach. Here you go, Coach.
Just, uh, just tell them about these guys a little bit.
Yeah, this is the 2025 junior team from Walton County Athletic League. They, uh, they put a lot of hard work in since the beginning of July. Lots of late night practices, lots of team bonding. Um, they've had several events where they, they just get together and, and have fellowship. And that's the biggest thing that makes this place tick is the family brotherhood that these guys, they put in every single day. Um, we're super proud of the hard work they did with it. You were at the game. It was a very hard fight all the way to the bitter end. We couldn't be more proud of what they've accomplished this year.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, then, um, Vicki's going to take a picture from the back, so tell us what to do, Vicki. Somewhere back behind we got.
Brian, that's about as far as I can see, so y'all can get, you know, maybe we can. The boys are kind of okay, y'all okay, but the coaches.
We can make another roll, I think we need to.
Let's see if I can see everybody. Team effort.
Let her get a plate, get some pics, and then she'll give you the whole floor. All right, Miss Vicki.
All right, one, two, three. Take team, team, um, your toes. All right, one, two, three. We gotta work.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a big hand. All righty. We will, uh, begin with the consent agenda and we will look for a motion to approve. And if there is something needs to be pulled off of there, which I think Kobe's got something.
Yes, Mayor, if we could, um, we could pull, uh, 3F1 and put that on the regular agenda. We could stick that under a 4C1.
3F1, 4C1.
Motion to approve what changes?
Second.
I would have a motion in a second. Who's next? Anything you remember, Josh?
Uh, Josh, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Josh came out and talked, but we'll.
I'll do a thumbs up if RPL needs me to.
Okay. All right, now we're going to the, the regular agenda. Um, now they had brought one addition to it. Now Todd tells me, Clay says that the council has to approve of it. In the past, it's always been the manager and the mayor could go ahead and add at the last minute. But I'll tell you what it is. It's a, it, uh, it has to do with the, um, Main Street and the, some of the vendors downtown. And the reason it was not put on the agenda is because just found out about it in the last 24 hours. And, uh, it's going to have some real impacts before we have another meeting. Now, that's why it's urgent because by the time we have another meeting, the impacts will already be made. And, uh, I'm sure we have some people here that will share some of those impacts. But basically what I'm being told is that, you know, some of the, a couple of the restaurants are very, very concerned about. It's a little bit beyond the Saturday, uh, farmer's market. It's going to be a lot more events, which is going to, uh, make it to where you can't, it's harder to get their restaurants and plus they're going to be competing, competing with many more food vendors. So, um, if this, we want to take this to a vote as to whether or not to allow it to be on the agenda. Um, I will, uh.
Have, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Have we allowed, have we allowed enough time for the business owners and the vendors to, to show up for this one though? Because I think this is the same topic we talked about at the DBPA, um, Town Hall that night. Is, is that what it is? Okay.
I'm not sure.
Because that was kind of contentious.
The, I know the Main Street was going to have a meeting today and they were told well ahead of their meeting. And, uh, and I know at least one vendor, I don't know about two, that knew that we were going to have a meeting. Yeah, we have two that were aware that we're going to have the meeting, so, uh, there has been a, a little bit of notification. But the, you know, again, the reason this thing is even urgent is because by the time we have another meeting, most of these activities would have already been done or be set in place. So, you know, I, I, I tell you, I just came back from, uh, rural economic development. And I tell you, you know, what we do with Main Street and a lot of things we do downtown is very, very critical for our city. But I also know that our, you know, we've got to take care of our existing vendors, uh, who pay god knows how much money, you know, every month to, just to rent their facilities. But, um, we want there to be a good compromise. It's not one or the other. And so that's the reason I figured we'll have this discussion to see if this can be any kind of a compromise brought.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm of the opinion that this is an issue between the merchants and Main Street. The, the council has voted months ago at this point to authorize the, the closure and to, to bring this up at the last second. Um, basically on the afternoon of, of the, the council meeting, uh, I don't feel it's appropriate. Um, I received some phone calls this afternoon. I know that people were scrambling to get here, that were out of town. I don't think it's appropriate to consider it at this time. I don't even think it's appropriate to consider it, period. We voted. If, if there's an issue, then they.
You express your opinion. We're going to bring it to a vote and the council can decide whether or not we take it up or not.
Well, I'll make a motion to reject that addition.
Kim.
Is there no second?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
All right, second. Um, any other discussion? Go ahead.
I've, I didn't, I was not here for the DPPA thing, so I don't even know what the issue is. Uh, if it was discussed.
Allow it to happen. You'll find out in just a few minutes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can somebody educate me on?
If that's okay, I'm going to be as close to Mr. Atkinson again as possible. I think we probably went as far as we need to go. We need to add it or not add it. I don't think we need to have discussion on it unless we add it to the agenda.
What, there's a first and a second for discussion, correct?
To reject, to reject.
An addition to the agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, not the, not the actual item itself.
I.
I just don't want us to get into territory we might get in trouble with.
How, how long ago was it that we were at that DBPA meeting? Because that seems like it's been two or three weeks ago.
Before.
It was, yeah.
And then we, we approved the, uh, agenda item for the closure either September, October.
So there's been plenty of time to bring it forward before now.
Yeah, well, reality has struck them, I guess, uh.
And I know that there was.
Okay, let's stop the discussion.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Okay, uh, so I'm going to ask a, all in favor of, you know, reject or not allowing it to be put on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
I, I agree. Aye.
I'm a nay because I'm aware of some of the circumstances, but, you know, I wish we had a chance to discuss it.
Since the people are here, I believe they deserve the right to voice their opinion. Nay.
Aye.
I was Carrie. Okay, well, I hope every, you know, it's, uh, correcting what you said there, Mr. Bearbaum. Of course, you guys can always protest anything outside of put on the agenda. But that's, that's probably the way it should have been. That's okay. Either way, I would have lost. So it's not going to go on the agenda. I am so sorry that we're not going to have any discussion about this. If, uh, you want to make a comment, public comment, that's fine, but we're not going to have a, an agenda item, so it won't get voted on. Okay.
Motion to approve the regular agenda with the one change.
Second.
Okay.
Second. I don't think they heard you, Josh.
Yes, second. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Aye.
I was Carrie. Thank you very much. And we will now go to, I guess, uh, Mr. Rob.
Uh, no, Mayor, it'll be a 4C1.
That's right. We got 4C1 that came off the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
And so you'll go ahead with that.
I'm just going to thank you, Mayor. Uh, council attached, uh, was the, was a quote to purchase a stationary bypass pump for Pinehurst Lift Station number two, lift station at Pinehurst number two. I'm sorry. Uh, y'all recall a few months back when you, you accepted the final plan for Pinehurst two. There was a condition that the developer would pay the city the amount needed to buy a bypass pump. And so they did that. We carried that forward this fiscal year, and so we want to get that bought. Um, on the agenda, you have a quote for $60,000, $60,096. We have got a new quotes, um, Friday, and that is in the amount of $53,006.86. You each have that quote in front of you. And I'll make sure Ms. Rafi also has it. So I'm asking you to approve, uh, the quote in front of you from Exlim in the amount of $53,006.86. This lift station would come off the Florida Sheriff's Contract, uh, number FSA 23-EQU dot 21 dot 0, item number 313.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
All right, uh, go right ahead.
Um, Kobe, will you refresh my memory? Did, uh, did you say we went out to, how did you get these quotes? Because?
The quotes here in front of you today.
Yeah, I mean, was there a deadline? Did people?
No, so because it's on, uh, state contract, we reached out to one vendor. Uh, ran, we always try to give, you know, three, that's as possible, even if it's on state contract. But we reached out. The first one came in, uh, like, as I said, the developer paid the city $57,542. That is what we quoted them at the time. Uh, the first one came in at $60,000, so we had another one that came in at 53. And so we feel comfortable moving forward with this one based off state contract, and it is under the budgeted amount.
And, and when was that first one dated?
Michael, if you'll go back, yeah. Looks like 11/6/25.
Thank you. Got it.
All right, anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Aye.
I was Carrie. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to Mr. Rob on the CRA. Yeah, I need to move it back.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. All right, Rob Hamilton, Executive Director, CRA, uh, per the adopted CRA charter and chapter 163, uh, is your guys' job to appoint the chair and vice chair for the CRA annually. Uh, this is for the calendar year. At our meeting on the 19th, the board unanimously recommended to appoint Kathy Mosley and Bruton Campbell work as chair and vice pair, uh, vice chair respectively. Uh, again, this is for the calendar year, so I just need a approval from you guys to do that.
Let's do Kathy first with the chair position. I'm going to take a motion to appoint her as the chair.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions from anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 I was Carrie, and now for the vice chair.
So moved.
Second.
Motion taken that. And, uh, any, any comments? We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Aye.
I was Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rob.
Definitely appreciate their volunteering. I know it's not a very heavy-faced job. All right, uh, we will go now to citizen comments at this time. If you have a comment to make, uh, keep it less than three minutes and, um, and just state your name, business you're representing, and we'll go from there. Yes, ma'am.
Tammy Henderson with Sweet Southern Comfort. Um, I'm here tonight. I was out of town when the town hall meeting was, uh, for a food show in Orlando. And I went to, directly to the director of Main Street six weeks ago. Been, talked to her every week since, Jaden Broadway, I think is the name, letting her know that if they set Food Truck Friday up on Friday night, farmer's market on Saturday morning, straight through close to Saturday evening, that it was a detriment to our business as well as other business owners that are here as well. I was told and, um, that the Food Truck Friday was going to be moved down to last stop. I did not find out that that had changed until Saturday night.
I'm sorry, what, what went to, what went to the?
Food trucks.
Food Truck Fridays.
Okay, thank you.
They did not come back, she did not come back and tell me that that was not the case. So I had dropped it and was willing to live with the Saturday morning and Saturday night. Last year, farmer's market stopped and then Mistletoe Market started. So you weren't closed all day long. Now we will be shut, our street, our block only, will be shut down from 3:30, 3:30ish every Friday for five weeks, straight through Saturday evening, 8:00, 8:30 PM. We are struggling in this economy to make it. We believe in this community. This is supposed to be a hometown community. We're not trying to cause division. We're just trying to survive. And shutting us down on our busiest Friday and Saturdays is when you make your money. I've been here for two years as of the first of December. The money you make in December is the money that carries you through what is considered the slow season in Dufuniac, when everybody's leaving Dufuniac, going to the beach, going to the springs. That's your slow season. The month of December is when we make our money to carry us through the year. The businesses were not approached and asked what we thought about closing that block down for the entire day and extending the farmer's market. We had no idea this was happening until it was supposedly too late. Last year I was told it would be addressed for this year, how they were doing them, all of that, that stuff and shutting that block only down. Now we're at this year and I'm being told it'll be addressed next year.
Thank you. That's all the time I can give you.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
What's the name of your business?
Sweet Southern Comfort.
Thank you.
I left.
Can I ask that question? Um, what, just so I understand, from what time to what time on Friday and Saturday are the streets closed to your customers?
From 3:30ish on Fridays for food trucks to start setting up. And then we will be shut down the entire day on Saturday. So starting about.
For five weeks, your Saturdays. I thought the farmer's market was only from 8 to noon.
They're, well, those, now the farmer's market's not going to stop. They're going to stay all the way through Mistletoe now. So they don't want to have to take those booths down and move them and move all of their stuff and then come back and set back up. So they will stay in place and it will be farmer's market till noon. And then farmer, uh, it'll stay closed with their booth still in place. And then the Mistletoe Market people will come in and set up their booths. So it will stay closed the entire day. We have no parking.
Understood. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, I would, go ahead. Yeah. Just want to say thank you. I know everybody's trying to do the right thing for Dufuniac. And, and my name is Dan Bailey and my wife Sally. We own Pearl Abaking Company right there. In a similar way, we're impacted by this decision. And I'm not going to repeat everything she said, but, but we were not informed, you know, and, and matter of fact, we don't feel we. And, and matter of fact, we don't feel we've ever had a voice in this decision. And, and I mean concerned how Main Street even gets the power to make decisions over how our parking or our collective parking is being used, okay? But we were surprised on the 21st of November. And it was, we were discovered that they were going to make those changes really through a group, uh, a, a merchant gathering. That's how we discovered it. And then all, so this was a complete surprise to us as well, you know. And, you know, we employ, had a, on our peak, maybe 15 to 20 employees. They pay taxes in this community. They live in this community. Their, their wages, often a good part of them depend on tents, okay, you know. So, and we pay rent here, okay? And, you know, and there, and we, every year, we have to go on a basis of being able to predict how we're going to do, and we have to make these decisions, okay, on how we're going to survive here, you know. You know, and we started on, on, you know, on Baldwin in the beginning. We took, you know, we rolled the dice. We believed in this community. We thought it was special, you know. And so as it changes, the only thing we're asking for is we just need a voice, okay? We need to be heard. We, we, we don't need, you know, I'm not sure how, how and how this happens, but we need to have a voice. Main Street should not be able to come in and shut down our streets. And, and I'm not sure how the internal workings occur, but somebody approves this, okay? They get these permits, but nowhere are the merchants' voice in that conversation, you know. And maybe that's my fault. I need to be more aware when these meetings are being held. I'm with you, um, and I'm sorry I didn't get your name, Todd, but I agree, this is really a Main Street. We should be able to work this out, you know, but right now it's, it's not. We should be all being able to dream the same dream and figure out how to work toward this so that we're all healthy. Okay, so that's my comments. And she gave you all the details of what's going on, you know.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Kobe, one question? Kobe, I don't want to talk about it right now, but will you please send me the meeting minutes that say we approved the street closure of, from 3 o'clock on Fridays to whenever on Saturdays? And if it's multiple meetings, would you just send that to me, please?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Ali, he'll, if he can, he'll pull the minutes, and he'll pull the agenda which the special events permit was approved by the council.
Okay. I, I do remember us approving like missile market or whatever, but I didn't, I don't ever understand when we closed, uh, the streets from, I thought it was 8 to 12, I guess, uh, for, for farmer's market. And I do understand that, and I think we did extend that, but thank you.
Just, just for the councilwoman's information, the, the original application was brought, I think, earlier in the year and was approved. And then Main Street requested a modification to extend the market hours. And that modification was approved, if I remember correctly, and I, don't quote me on this, but if I remember correctly, it was sometime in either September or October.
Okay.
Is when, when the modification for the Main Street. Now, I would like to add, as someone that has volunteered to assist with the shutdown of the, of the farmer's market and the opening of the mistletoe market, where I do want to point out, there are over 300 vendors scheduled to appear, many of whom are local to this area, having to go into the businesses and say, do you have a car out here? You need to move it. We're closing the street. You're going to get blocked in by tents and everything else. That was a logistical nightmare. From my point of view, when this was requested and this was approved, that made sense from a logistics standpoint to have the road closed so that you can then, you don't, then don't have to chase people down at 1 and 2 o'clock that are trying to get, uh, either a coffee or a, a lunch or whatever the case may be. Because that's what I had to do, personally had to do, was go into those businesses and say, hey, the white minivan that's out here, or the black truck that's out here, you need to move your car because we're setting up for mistletoe market, and you're about to be blocked in. And then we had people that refused to move, that were in, in some of those businesses, that after the tents were set up, we then had to escort those vehicles out around people that were walking and setting up, including young children. So from a, from a safety perspective, it actually makes much more sense. I will also offer up my observation, because this has been occurring for five-plus years. The businesses that got up here and spoke, I have been in both of those businesses before during these events, and it's seen it packed. So something's not jiving here, because I've, I've seen with my own eyes those businesses packed out.
May I have a comment? Is it possible? Okay. All right.
Well, you didn't use up all your time. You got 30 seconds.
Okay, well, I think the biggest change is, is those streets close at 6:00 AM, okay, from prior years.
And we've been, we understand the benefit of having them there. But when you close our streets at 6:00 AM till that time, most of our customers are in, in that range from 7 to 11. The old farmer's markets and so on used to start much later. But you shut off there, and I'm just speaking for me. I can't speak for the Pink House or what, what they do in, 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 as well, but that's, these are, you're shutting down the whole, you're pushing customers. And by the way, residents that normally go there are out of the way. And these supply, get the benefit here, but those, nobody out there pays rent, okay, all right? We do, all right? And now you're asking 300 vendors to come in, and you're going to shut down our business for a full, really a day and a half. That's, and that's, in my opinion, is not fair, okay? There's right is right and wrong is wrong, okay? And that's all I'd ask you guys to consider. There's a compromise here. And I understand it's inconvenient to get the parking arranged, but you're taking our customers away, okay?
I disagree with that assessment. Like I said, I've seen those, both of those restaurants packed out during those events, whether it's the farmer's market that occurs in the morning, or whether it's the mistletoe market that occurs in the evening.
Go ahead. Well, my, my concern is when we approved, the farmer's market typically ends in mid-November. So this is the only year where the council has approved the, the market to continue into December. Now, when that came before the council, I assumed that the business owners had been asked. It's my understanding now that they have not. Maybe some were, but evidently all were not. I would not have voted for it had I known that. Because Main Street exists for those brick and mortar businesses. It's always been my opinion. That is Main Street programs. The events draw people down there. And on one hand, it is up to the businesses to get those people in their door once they're there. But I understand the concern here, you know, with the food truck Fridays, especially in front of two restaurants. That, that's hard, that's hard. If I were at one of those restaurants, it'd be hard for me. I, I have to, I have to admit that. It, it has been held on other blocks, uh, prior, uh, to, uh, this time. And so, you know, I have, I have some concerns about that. It's unfortunate we are, are here. I will do everything I can if, if, if this doesn't change. Everybody that walks up to my tent, uh, for kettle corn, I will be sending them your way. And, uh, I hope that we can leave spaces open in front of these businesses. That was discussed. Jaden and I had that conversation. So maybe people can just funnel in and, and to them. But you're right, uh, Councilman, that a, a lot of businesses have praised, um, the, the closure of mistletoe market, the overflow of traffic in the restaurants and what have you. This little bit different with the, the Saturday morning, uh, being closed off completely. But it is an absolute nightmare setting up vendors, you know, even in the middle of day and, and vacating cars so that vendors can set up. So that's always been a problem. So maybe the time in the future needs to be adjusted. But that's my, my only, my, my only, I feel bad that I, I wasn't aware that, uh, all business owners have not been asked. I think they should absolutely be asked with every decision that affects their business. Because that's what Main Street is there for.
Anyone else?
I concur.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Bailey Rushing. Um, I'm a board member on Main Street. I want to add a couple of things. First, the permit extension, we added three hours total. Um, and a large part of the reason why we decided to make that change, as Mr. Beerbaum expressed, is a safety concern. Um, I personally, last year, we had one vehicle that I had to get law enforcement's help with escorting that vehicle out. And to me, when the idea of just extending for three hours and allowing our farmer, farmer's market vendors to remain there, also instead of having to break down and set up, those two things were a huge reason why, as a board member, I voted to request that change. We went through proper channels and submitted that, um, to you guys, and it was approved. I completely understand our merchants' issues, uh, with parking, unfortunately. I don't know what the answer there is, you know. We're not the only town that closes down a street. Almost everywhere I've traveled closes down, um, during the holidays to have events. I don't know that I've ever traveled somewhere and not had to park my vehicle for one, in one spot for an entire day and walk. And that's part of Main Street's goals. We want people to walk our town. We've offered several solutions to the merchants that have come to us with their concerns. And unfortunately, every solution that we've offered has been turned down. One business, we specifically offered to renovate their, um, backdoor area so they could have their guests, um, and customers come in there. That was declined. Um, and we've thought of, of, of several solutions, you know, offering or changing it to one-way traffic and having people be able to park. I, I, safety is what I think is my biggest concern, especially after seeing vehicles have to travel through that market and having to get law enforcement. And we honestly, we don't want to have to call in tow trucks. I think that would be a huge detriment to the people in our city who are spending money downtown is to have to have their vehicle towed because it's a safety issue. And another thing, too, uh, walking into each business and having to announce that if you have a vehicle parked out here to come move, I don't think that generates, um, a good relationship with our, you know, uh, merchants or our, our people that are coming in to, to spend money downtown. So those were kind of the, uh, thoughts that went into the decision from the Board to extend it. And I'll agree, maybe there wasn't great communication. Um, we've had a couple of employment changes here recently, and there probably was not enough communication. As a board member, I'll definitely own that. Um, I also have a full-time job, and most of our board members do, so we probably dropped the ball on that. But we're definitely listening, and we're very, we're considering a lot of changes next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I'm Garrett Henderson with, uh, I'm a local, Long County, Dufuniac Springs resident. My concern with everything is not that we are opposed to the street being shut down. We're opposed to it being shut down for how long it's shut down for. We've always been in favor of, uh, the farmer's market. We've always supported the farmer's market. We're out there shopping every Saturday for the farmer's market. I believe that there is a solution, solution to this. There are, uh, other blocks that are not, uh, restaurants that would not be in competition, would actually probably benefit from the flow of people coming in. I do disagree that most of the food trucks are not local residents. I haven't talked to them, but I would, I would have to guess that. I think that their, uh, last stop, Brew Vault, would benefit greatly from food trucks being outside of their place. I think that people could grab food, go in and have some beers, hang out, play pool. I think they would benefit greatly from that. We do not. We come in, we put into this community. We love this community. We want to see this community grow. We also want to grow with this community. Putting food trucks in competition in front of our door absolutely negates any of that. We are looking to expand. We are in the process of remodeling right now and expanding. You're killing us. You're absolutely killing us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Certainly.
Yes, sir.
Are you with the last stop?
I am not. Um, I work for Sweet Southern Comfort.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman, to answer your question, uh, Mary Main Street and the farmer's markets, initial applications were approved on January 27th of this year. And then on October 27th, there was an amendment to the farmer's market application, uh, that extended it into December. That was approved.
And the mistletoe?
That was approved January 27th.
On that, okay.
So, so Mayor, if I can, someone mentioned, Jaden, I don't think you were employed yet at that time back in October, were you?
You got somebody on the come to vote?
Well, yes.
The Main Street label.
Well, Bailey mentioned the, the transition of, of Executive Director. So that's, I, I agree with you. That's, that's-
We just, we just, the life on the come to vote.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Oh. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Let her ask a question real quick, Mark.
Okay.
When does mistletoe market start? Cause I like the do, I like his solution. When does that start?
11:29, Craig.
11:29.
I'm hoping, my prayer is that you can work with Main Street to maybe, to see if they would change their, change their block, but well, I'm not here to debate it. I'm just saying I like the solution.
Well, let Mark wait.
Yep. I was here to answer questions, but Mark Bird, uh, Lifetime City, uh, resident, Vice President of the Main Street Organization. Everybody up there knows me. Uh, Ms. Tammy knows me, and I don't know you. It's the timing. That was done on October 27th. Our last three board meetings has literally been consumed with fixing that problem. Totally aware, even though at the merchant mingle, it was a great night. I, I never heard one complaint at our merchant mingle, which would have been a great time for us to get ahead of this problem, you know? So what I would like to say as Vice President, I set that farmer's market up almost every Saturday of the year. And I have a bacon, egg, and cheese sandwich from Soco. And I have a caramel, not sure what all they put in that, but it's really good. And I say that to say we're trying, you know, we really are. We want the best solution for everybody. Dumping the food trucks on that block is just because people love that block. But I'm with Councilman Beerbaum. I've eaten at Soco twice because I could not get a food from a food truck. I, I think the runover helps. I know Tammy and I have had that discussion before. I understand, and I want you to know that, I mean, we've got a 12-member team, and our heads are banging right now. We're, we're working towards a solution. The problem is Thanksgiving's Thursday. It's just a little bit too late. But I just want them to know that we are doing it. It's going to happen. We're going to figure it out. We're going to make it work for everybody. But again, we've offered some compromises. They get lost in translation, but we're getting there. They, the brick and mortars are our heart. We, we know that, and we don't want to do anything to, to mess up that relationship. Anybody got anything for me?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say one more thing?
Well, I really, it kind of crosses the rules. Your husband certainly can. Again, get, get your dad. Yeah, you both have been up.
I know, but I still have more time whenever I left, but.
Well, let's let him see if he can, we'll see if he can make a mess out here.
Well, see, we've been told, ever since we moved here, that, that come this time of the year, this is when we were, we'll be able to make our, make our money. And we, uh, the, uh, the thing was, up until last week, we were on, in, on, in the understanding that everything was going to be down at the other block. And then all of a sudden, they said, oh, no, 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 it's going to be here. We, we have no clue. It's, uh, uh, I, I don't know who dropped the ball, maybe, I don't even know they had a meeting on this. I could have, we could have came and voiced our opinion. We, we are, no one lets us know anything, or, or maybe we need to know how to get involved with it. But, you know, we, uh, we can't, we, I don't know how we're going to survive this if we, if we shut down for five weeks as the best part of the year, you know? We do everything we can to struggle through and get through. We have, we have, uh, a, like you said, we, we've got over a dozen employees just from this area. You know? area, you know? I mean, it's, it's, and a lot of those people depend on that check every week.
Sure.
You know, we pay a lot of rent. We play, we pay a lot of payroll. It's, we don't make a lot. I don't know what everybody thinks, but we don't make a lot out of it.
Right.
It's a lot of work, a lot of hours. If you broke it down into that, you would be surprised, almost volunteer. So, but, but anyway, it's just, this is, it's almost impossible to try to make a living with the economy has been so bad up till, you know, where it's finally starting to get better and now we're going to get shot in the foot.
Well, we were not going to be able to make any kind of decisions tonight. Y'all sharing some education with us on both sides. And I hope that we can come back and make everybody as happy as possible. I'm sure that it's going to be a challenge.
Well, Mr. Cam, we was told last year that, that it would be looked into and then here we are again now and we still have the same problem. Actually, it's even worse this year than it was last year.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Okay, anyone? Yes, ma'am. Now, this doesn't, this doesn't all have to be about Main Street. So if you have something else, you're welcome to.
Well, I'm Kami Morgan and I'm with the Pink House. I just want to say that I'm in support of all of the Main Street functions that happen. But every time that there is anything that blocks our street off, it really affects our business. If it was a positive for our business, I wouldn't be here right now. I would be at home with my kids. But every time that the streets are closed off, people stop coming in. On Small Business Saturday, we're, we're good all day long up until they start blocking the street off and people just quit coming in. It's the same with the food trucks. Nobody comes in when the food trucks are there. And we have appointments on Fridays until 6 o'clock. So we have to cancel those because the people that visit us after they've had a treatment done, they don't want to walk out to a street full of food trucks with, there's, you know, people that may know them, recognize them. So it does really affect us. And like I said, I wouldn't be here now if we didn't feel the impact of that. And the, the idea of letting people into our back door through the back alley, that just doesn't work. You, you go into our break area through our storage, like it's just, we try to keep it clean. We don't have rats and mice, but nobody wants to go in through the back alleyway. And nobody wants to walk around the building. You can't pass, two cars can't pass in our alleyway. So I don't really see that as being an answer to what we need. And I do want to work with the community. I want to work with everybody. But I just wanted to let y'all know how deeply it affects us when our street is blocked off, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
What's your business?
The Pink House. The Pink House?
Okay.
We're beside Perla.
Okay.
So we do have a lot of people that come in and ask to use the restroom, but they don't do anything except leave a mess and they don't buy anything. So, but.
Will you share your name again with us?
Kami Morgan.
Tammy Morgan.
With a C.
Oh, Kami, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Can we wrap this up? Okay. All right, we're going to shut the floor for public comment. Take the information you got and just be as productive with it as you possibly can. We, we just, we don't want this to be just a two-sided polarizing. We want you guys to think about how we can come to a good compromise and, and everybody benefit from it. So thank you very much. All right. Attorney's not here, so we'll go to Mr. Beerbaum with the CRA reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this short and sweet. I'd like to reappoint Reynolds Henderson to the CRA. Second.
All right, there's been an appointment and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie. All right, Mr. Scunner, you have a request for our manager?
Yes, sir. I'm going to try and get through this as quick as I can, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we have 211 houses under development along Walton Road. Myself and City Manager Toby Townsend spoke recently with a fellow county, one of our county commissioners about the need for roadway expansions or an assessment so that we can evaluate the conditions there, given the two schools, three schools that are on that road, as well as the school district under construction and additionally the 211 houses that are coming. If you add up two, two cars to every household, you've got about 420 cars being added to that roadway when it's already highly or heavily congested. I understand that we have a red light coming on 83 and Walton Road in the near future. However, I don't feel like that's going to meet all of the issues, given the three-way stops there on Walton Road. So my request tonight is simply to send the city manager to the BCC to request that a traffic assessment be performed on Walton Road for our needs analysis on what we actually need there, if it's a third lane for turning or passing or whatever.
Motion.
And that's a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions about the motion?
This is overdue, really overdue.
Yeah, absolutely.
And he's got, our city manager's got some background on it too.
Just to clarify, Councilman, you want me to get on the board county commissioner's agenda for their formal recognition of it?
Yes, sir. And, and the reason for the need, Mr. Mayor, is this is something that's not new. It's something we spoke about in the past. However, when Mr. Townsend originally spoke to Chance Powell, I believe is the last name of the county engineer, it was almost like it wasn't on his radar. So it's something we definitely want to get on their radar and have them look at it.
Okay, Chance, I know he used to do most of his concentration in South Bend. Is he up here?
He is. Mr. Powell's county engineer, when I spoke to him, Congressman Scunner said, they just had not had anything in the plans for Walton Road at the time. So that's kind of where we had left off.
Okay, all right. And any other comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Just clarification. Are you getting on the board or is he just having a meeting?
Meeting.
Just, well, I think he's asked me to get, to have an agenda item on the board county commissioner's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I've just added to it. I've had several people along Twin Lake Drive approach me about their concerns about that becoming a through road once those houses get in there at the, the end of Walton Road. So I, I think that that needs to be included as well as, you know, what, what can we do to kind of limit that through traffic and push that traffic either to 83 or 331? Certainly needs to be considered.
Well, that should be concerned every artery. What do we got? We got 20th and then we've got Lakeview.
Yeah, 20th, Twin Lake Drive, Lakeview, Shoemaker.
Got Twin Lakes and.
Shoemaker.
Twin Lakes is going to be a very big popular once we, once we repave it.
Right. So maybe we need to consider, I hate to say it, but maybe we need to consider some stop signs.
Well, I tell you what, if you ever go out there and they let school out, God help you.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye.
Hi, Carrie. Thank you very much. All right, we got some executive.
Just a couple of quick ones. I will be sure to get on the county's soonest agenda. The chances of them did have been very responsive in the past. I feel like we'll get somewhere. Has brought to them the concerns about Walton Road, where I think the buses have been stopping and they kind of like curl the road up. Pub Works for the county went out and fixed it. So I think we'll get somewhere. Just a quick update on the finance director hiring process. Ms. Chance and I had a conversation last week with the consultant. We provided them all the documentation they requested in terms of job description, any information, they had a checklist, we gave that to them. They will be reaching out to you and I will get their phone, get everyone's contact to them. They like to reach out and talk to each individual councilman and the mayor, you know, 15, 20 minutes to kind of go over your ideas, what you think of the individual, if there's some questions, prepared questions. So be on the lookout for that and we'll be working to help set that up. And then they are currently working on creating the brochure right now. So they're, they're getting that finalized as well. And then lastly, remember Christmas Reflections starts this Friday? So staff's been busting it. Pub Works has really been putting in a lot of work and doing great out there. So we appreciate their hard effort and that starts this Friday.
Did you get some of our vendors from around the community, companies, I should say?
Correct. So this year we have two, two carriage rides vendors that have worked.
No, I'm talking about like, you know, people from LeCom or Kelco.
Oh, it's volunteer. There has been a number of volunteers. I'd look at the calendar and say exactly who, but yes, there's been a number of people willing to volunteer.
Okay, great. Yes.
I'd like to say congratulations to Jesse. I missed you all at the chili cook-off this past week. Mayor, you were out of town. I got to play you for, for a day and congratulations to.
You got to do about three.
Yeah, I did get three, three days, so, but I, I just wanted to give Jesse a shout out because he was waiting for that trophy. He didn't get it. He was the reigning champion, I guess, for a while and a blind taste test and he became the champion again, so.
Before you move on, thank you very much. I heard you did extremely well.
Oh, thanks.
All right, Glenn?
I'm trying to do this quickly. On Main Street, sometimes so many folks that are here, I know Main Street has reached out in the past for data. And decisions are often made best based on data. So when Main Street asks you for your sales during these events or your traffic or whatever, that information helps them make decisions and they don't always get that information back when, when, when they do ask businesses. So I will say that. And we all truly, truly do want to work together and I think that would help tremendously. Christmas Reflections crews worked hard to get that set up. This Saturday, Small Business Saturday, kickoff of Mistletoe Market. Shop downtown, please. Local, all over town, eat downtown restaurants, please. Mayor and I went down to Ocala for a three-day rural economic.
He wouldn't ride with me, but we, we met down there.
Well, I think he got, I think he got home in 45 minutes. But anyway, it was a tremendous, Tim Parsons was there for Liberty Partners. Jordan Johnson from the Economic Development Alliance went down. Mayor Barley went down. So we had good representation of our county and down there, tremendous summit, a lot of information about rural economic development. So a lot of good things coming. Tallahassee is putting a major emphasis on, on economic development in rural communities across the state of Florida, so good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next month, are we going to start over with having the airport workshop at the second meeting of the month?
We don't have a second meeting in the month, so last meeting, we decided to have the first one in January.
Okay. And I didn't get the memo on why it was canceled this time?
Because we don't have a second meeting in the month of December.
This meeting, this is the second meeting in.
Is this the second?
This is the second meeting.
We, I, I can't, we ever took, specifically talked about it. I think we did not schedule it because we were on the fence whether we were going to have one or not at all. So we didn't schedule the workshop. We didn't know.
Is there been any change since last time that you know of or with Liberty Partners, with you know?
I'll let Tim speak on that a minute, FAA, but in terms of designing the project, Andre and I have met with Garber, go over the design work. They're 60% complete on design. And so they're working with DOT with that and the funding. And so we hope to have, they're moving forward that pretty fast. In terms of FAA, we have not received correspondence from the FAA as of today.
And that's the major holdup?
Correct. I know, I know Jennifer has spoke to someone higher at FAA in that same office and we got very similar responses we had received previously.
Yeah, just quickly, Councilman, like I said, had the workshop on Monday, November the 10th. That was when we were given the direction to follow up with FAA. Jennifer did communicate some additional information specifically as it related to Gene Hurley Park, to make sure they had everything there at their disposal. And their response was it, it's still going under legal review. They appreciated that additional information. As you know, I think the shutdown ended that week, so hopefully they're getting back up and, and running. I know there was discussion about whether or not to travel to Orlando to sit down with them. I think at this time, we think they've got sufficient information to make a, make a decision here soon and we'll take it from there.
Kobe, there was some discussion at the last workshop about putting out some bids.
Yeah, we, at our monthly airport meeting, we talked about it as well. We're not there yet because this Garber has not gotten substantial design complete. So we get closer to 90%, 100% design, then we can start looking at the options of putting out for bids.
Thank you.
Mr. Beerbaum? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be real, real brief. It was an honor to represent not only Defoe-Nex Springs, but Walton County as the Vice Chair of the TPO. So next year I will serve as the actual Chair of the TPO, which I was humbled to, to be appointed by Walton County Commissioner Tony Anderson to that and the, and the TPO approved that. So this was technically my first meeting because they had canceled the, the meeting in the summer for lack of, of agenda items, surprisingly. But we are ramping up. They, they kind of did the initial overview for, for this review cycle of the next five-year plan. They mentioned the, the road expansion at Rock Hill. They mentioned the 98 expansion. So there, there was a lot of things covered. I came away from that, I immediately called Kobe as he was driving north. I was like, Kobe, this is what we got to do. And so I mentioned a couple of, of opportunities that were brought up at the TPO that I'm hoping that Kobe can work with our grants coordinator and we can get put into the, the DOT system for sidewalks. They have, it's called TA, Transportation Alternatives. And I'm really hoping that we can get a couple of our sidewalk projects put into that. We're allowed to submit up to three. And I was told, kind of behind the scenes, that in the past, there's only been a couple submissions. So hopefully we can, that will hold true again this year and we can submit.
Long story.
I know. So good, good meeting. Quick, it was a quick meeting, but I'm, I'm honored to, to serve on that. I do want to mention a couple of things. I did have a conversation with Mr. Bryant Polk of FDOT. And as far as this road construction goes, he invited us, specifically you and the city manager, that as you see a lack of activity out there, to call the operations center over. And I believe it's either, it's either, thank you. He, he invited us to call and let them know because they actually track the number of days that the contractor could have worked and chose not to work. And he, he explained to me that there are only two approved contractors in the state right now for, or at least in our region, for these projects. And they basically have so much to do that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So he invited us that if we see these projects not having a lot of activity on it, that is completely within our, our right to call over there and say, hey, what's going on with this? We haven't seen a lot of activity, much like how they paved and stopped right there at Bruce and have left it for a couple of weeks. I mentioned that to him. He said, call. We can't do anything until you call. When you call, we have leverage to go to the contractor and say, hey, what's going on with this?
You still got a big bounce down there right now.
Yeah, correct. Yes, sir.
If you're somebody, one of these, my wife's got these low-profile tires. Holy cow, they will run them.
And as soon as I mentioned that, he, he hung his head. He knew exactly what I was talking about. So he said for us to call. For, you know, I explained to him that the citizens have come to our meetings and expressed their frustration. I've seen it on Facebook. I expressed that, expressed that to him. He said, we have to call. That's the leverage. That's the lever we have to pull, so call.
I sent them a brother.
He mentioned you two, so I'm, I'm going to put it on.
Well, I talked to them all, you know, at the Secretary of Retirement, but, you know, and then of course, some of them say, you know, you're going to have to go over their heads. Well, I don't want to go over anybody's head if I don't need to.
No, but, but he, he really explained that, that when we call in, that gives them the impetus for then calling the contractor and saying, hey, we're receiving public comment that there's an issue here. You guys need to get out there and finish the job. And I asked him about why it takes so long. It's, it, it literally has to do with the fact that they give them a certain number